Today is November 2, 2020. It is 7:00 PM. And this is the first meeting, regular meeting of the Planning Board of the City of Asbury Park, scheduled for November of 2020.
Okay, the meeting will come to order. The following is the Sunshine Statement. The following meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, amended on 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically during a state of emergency. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coast to Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. In addition, a notice regarding this virtual meeting and instructions were published in the Asbury Park Press in the City of Asbury Park website. A copy of the notice is on file with the Board Secretary. The notices and conduct of this meeting are in accordance with the guidelines of the virtual meetings issued by the State New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Please note all microphones for public users are muted until the public question or comment period. If you would like to speak during that time only, please use the raise hand button in Zoom. If you're on a computer or dial *9 if you are on a telephone. Your name or last four digits of your phone number will be called when it's your turn to speak. If at any time during your question, you are deemed to be out of line or topic, we reserve the right to mute your microphone and we'll make an announcement that states that. During the public comment session only, the public has three minutes to speak. Please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices during the meeting. Please identify yourself before you speak at all times. And this meeting is being recorded and will be available to you via AP TV. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call. Mayor John Moore. Absent. Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton. Absent. Michael Manzella. Absent. Jim Henry?
Here.
Jennifer Souter?
Here.
Trudy Syfax? Absent. Alexis Taylor?
Here.
Eric Galipo?
Here.
Sorry, same thing happened last time.
Oh, Alexis's name sounds like Alexa.
That happens every day when I speak to my boss, too.
Well, at least Jethro told it and start the play, so we're good. Okay, Rick Lambert?
Here.
Barbara Krizik?
Here.
Okay, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 members in attendance, therefore we have a quorum.
Okay, ready to get going?
You're in.
All right, the first item is 503 Eighth Avenue LLC. It was carried from September 21, 2020. They are looking to carry once again. Without notice, we received a letter from Kevin Kelly, I mean Kevin Kennedy, the applicant's attorney, asking for us to extend and carry this application. The only concern that I have about carrying the application without notice is that if there are any major or substantial modifications to this application, I would like that we go back and request that notice is given. But at this point, we don't know what the modifications are. So at this point, I would suggest that we do carry this application to, let me see. January, oh, January.
Wow.
11th. That's our next opening.
Madam Chairwoman, if I may?
Yes.
In Exhibit B1 on Page 2 at Paragraph 6, Mr. Kennedy indicates that he's fine with any notification requirements that were the office, staff office, myself, or the board may want him to employ, so we're good with that. So if that's the case, if we decide that notice is necessary for the January meeting, we'll be informed and I will inform him.
Right, the only other concern is that this started in September. How many months notices are good for?
I wouldn't go into January. I'd ask Kevin to get another list of property owners at that point.
So then to re-notice anyway?
Yeah, if it's necessary. If the application is the same, you know, give or take a couple of minor detail changes, there's no reason at this point.
Okay. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to carry this application to January 11 without notice.
Subject to what you said about?
Yes, subject to any major modifications that would require a change in relief.
Jim Henry so moved in accordance with the other provisos in Mr. Kennedy's letter.
Then Souter will second.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a voice vote of yea or nay with those members present. All in favor?
Yea.
Yea.
Any nays? Eyes have it. Madam Chairwoman, thank you.
Okay, the next item, next application that we have is 917 Asbury Avenue, Block 403, Lot 10. Jack, do you want to square in the professionals?
Yes, let's get Mr. Henderson's professional first, his first witness.
I have three witnesses. The property, the head of the LLC, James Harmon, the architect, who is Mary Hearn, and the engineer planner, who is Paul Anderson.
Well, let's get Jay sworn. Who's your first witness?
Jay is the first witness.
Jay, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear the testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please spell your name for the record.
James Harmon, H-A-R-M-A-N.
Thank you. If I may, I'd like to have our planners, board planner, and engineers sworn, please. Doug, can you put yourself up in a video? Jason, can we get Doug to show his face?
Oh, there it is.
Okay, right hand raised. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Do you solemnly swear the testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please state your names for the record, everyone, and your affiliation with the board. And that, of course, included Donna. Sorry, Donna, that I excluded you. I saw your hand up.
Donna Miller, Board Planner.
Thank you.
Jason Fichter, Board Engineer.
Doug, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Doug Cleland, Board Engineer.
Thank you. Okay, Keith, first witness is yours.
Before we get started, because it's been so long since we appeared before you last, I'd just like to give the board a little background. If you recall, we appeared before the board last June. And particularly the professionals really didn't like the design that we had come up with, which was a restoration of an existing car repair place at the back end of the property. So based upon those reports, we withdrew our application and redesigned it from everything we understood that the board would prefer and that the professionals thought was better. And I think we answered the questions that were asked and were directed to us. It's in this latest application. And that's the background of why we're here tonight. And I'm going to call James Harmon as my first witness.
Before you do, I'm sorry for the interruption. I failed to advise the board that I reviewed the notices and they're in proper form and we have jurisdiction to proceed this evening.
Thank you, Jack.
Okay.
Sir Harmon?
Yes.
Are you a member of the limited liability company which owns the property?
I am.
And when you purchased this property, what was its prior use?
It was automotive repair.
And what do you plan to do with the property based upon the plans you have submitted?
I plan to construct a new building to the front on the city's property line for mixed use. The first floor would be retail slash office space. And the second and third floors would be two-bedroom apartments and one-one-bedroom apartment.
Now, in the planner's report, there's an indication that there is one three-bedroom apartment. Is that just a typographical error?
It seems to be a typo because the rest of the report is consistent with what I just mentioned.
You own other properties in the city?
I do.
And in fact, don't you own a property very close to this one?
I own a property, two properties that share lot lines. One directly to the east, one to the north. And also have three properties directly across Asbury Avenue, as well as Asbury Avenue around the corner to Memorial Drive.
And those properties were all restored by you, is that correct?
Correct.
So this is your first new build out? And the reason you made the application, the prior application, was because you had a good experience with those modifications of existing structures?
I did.
Did you attend the board meeting in June of this last year?
I did.
And based upon that, is that where this redesign came from?
Yes, we went back to the drawing board. We took the city's engineers' comments very seriously and after some thought, agreed that in the long run, it would probably make more sense to build a new structure consistent with other properties on Asbury Avenue. And I think, well, we'll get into a little bit later, but I think it would actually complement other properties that I own there. So that's why we went back to the drawing board, square one.
And you've asked the board for a parking variance, is that correct?
I have.
And based upon your prior experience in that neighborhood with your other properties, do you have an opinion as a layperson as to whether the parking proposed is adequate?
I believe it to be adequate, yes.
And you are asking for parking sharing, are you not?
Shared with that?
Yes.
With a mixed use, specific to that building, yes.
And can you tell us how you handle at the other buildings you have the trash removal and recyclable removal?
Yes, the most recent that I was in front of the planning board was the, I believe it was the first time that we presented, or the city was presented, a live-work project. And that is 901 through 911 Asbury Avenue, the corner of, it's the northwest corner of Asbury and Memorial Drive. And that consisted of a used car lot, a towing company, and some a building in the back that was in major disrepair. So the towing company became a retail space. The back structure became seven live-work units. And the front, where the car lot is, going to be rehabbed first quarter of 2021. So the back building, the live-work space, there are three businesses back there, two of which the business owners live in the units above. And one unit has a retail space. And the rest are residential. The other four units are residential only. Most of the spaces have inside garage storage for automotive storage. And then there are eight designated spots. And over the past almost two and a half years, we've experienced, the parking has not been stressed there at all.
And how about the proposed trash removal? How do you do it over there?
We have two two-yard rolling containers, one for trash, one for commingled recyclables. They're serviced once a week and there's never been an incident yet where we've had overflow of garbage.
And in terms of Item 31 in the report, one of the reports, they want to know how the property is going to be maintained. Can you explain how that will be taken care of?
Yes, I have contract landscape service and snow removal service year-round, respective of the seasons, of course.
Can I just stop just for one moment? If you're referring to any of the reports, can we get to the report? What page are we referring to and which item we're referring to? Because if we're going to go out of order like this, it's a little hard to keep track.
Sure.
Insights Report, Page 7, Item 31. Was the last question, Chairwoman.
And, Mr. Harmon, do you also own a management company?
I do.
And that's a property management company?
It is.
Will that be managing this site?
Yes, it would be.
I have no further questions of this witness unless the planning board does or members of the public do.
Which, I'm sorry, which other one did you reply to? Because I see only 31. Which other one?
The trash removal was Item 15.
And how is the trash going to be removed?
I have a weekly service that there's a trash removal that's done on Fridays. And then there is a commingled recyclable, and I believe that pickup is every Wednesday.
I believe that, and Jason or Doug, tell me if I'm wrong here, that wasn't there a question about how are you going to deal with retail and the residences as far as trash?
Yeah, that's a fair question. I'm guessing that Mr. Harmon is giving an overview of how this is going to operate and we're going to drill down into some details by way of the architect and engineer.
Right, and I'm fine with waiting if that's what's going to happen.
Yes, that's what we plan on.
Okay, then, fine.
But if we don't have to, if we can address it now, it's very simple. It's co-mingled between the commercial and the residential tenants.
And that's how you have it at the current site?
Correct, and there's much, much more demand there than what we're proposing here on this property.
And so just to clarify, if I may, this is Eric Galipo, board member. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Harmon. Did you say that you have a property that adjoins this one? Or is it?
The building directly to the east, 913-915 Atlantic Architectural is the business in there.
Okay.
I've owned that building since 2009 and that was a complete renovation as well.
Right, and you will continue to maintain these? You will not be merging the lots, just separate buildings?
Correct.
So is that Lot 9?
It is.
Even though the lots will remain separate, you still have one management company servicing them all, is that correct?
Yes.
And is that the only parcel that you own that is directly adjacent to this one?
I also own north of there, Lot 2, the vacant lot right now.
Lot 2?
It's on the back side or north side of this property.
So do you mind just reading off for us which lots you currently are currently within the ownership of the LLC?
Well, they're separate LLCs.
Okay, separate LLCs, but you are a member of all of them?
Correct.
Would you just mind letting us know which lots those are on that block?
Sure. If you're looking at the tax map, which is on SP1 from my planner?
Yes, sir.
Lot 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, and 2. And then it's not shown here, but on across On Asbury Avenue, it would also be beyond the 200, but that would be, I think, Lot 402.
But it's not on this block?
Yes, it is. It's directly across On Asbury Avenue.
I mean, on this contiguous block, okay. Not on Block 403?
That's all I have on Block 403.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the clarification.
My pleasure.
Again, I have no further questions for this witness unless members of the board do.
Nope, we don't. Anything else? I guess that once we get more deeply into it, then we can ask some questions about about the details. Hey, Jack, do we have to go to the public for this one?
Yeah.
Yep. Can we open it? Can we open up for anybody who want to raise their hand for?
Donna, the Board Planner, has a comment.
I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Donna Miller, Board Planner. So can you just clarify, Mr. Harmon, the properties that you just said, lots 2, 6, 8, 7, and 9? 2 is vacant. Of the other properties, are there residential uses on the other ones?
Yes, lots 8 and 7, there's three buildings on those two lots.
Live-work units?
Live-work runs along, it runs east to west on the north portion of that lot.
Okay.
Two structures, Donna, are retail on property or Lot 8. And then I think on 7, I think it straddles the lot line there, is going to be a future retail outlet. It's already been approved by the board back in 2017.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to understand that better.
You're welcome.
Anything else from the professionals or planning board? I'm looking at the public and I don't see any hands raised. I now see a hand raised. AP TV, can you allow the member of the public in? Thank you. Last digits, 350? If you'd like to ask a question?
Yeah, Ernest McNally, 400 Del Lake Drive, Apartment 5D, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I'd like to ask a question. In terms of the presentation, not all of us have the ability to see what you're putting up, I guess, on the virtual for all the members. And the language is kind of a little confusing. In other words, I'm asking, is it possible, when you're talking about the different lots, whether you're adjoining them or whatever, that along with describing the lots and the LLCs, you state the address? I mean, I'm a member of the public. It's a little bit more understandable to me when you say this is whatever, 221 Asbury Avenue, the other lot is whatever, 304 Bond Street. And so that kind of puts it in perspective because just naming off the lots, I'm just, can you do that? Can you tell me like the addresses in layman's terms of, we're talking three lots here, correct?
Mr. Harmon?
Happy to answer the question. The subject property we're discussing is 917 Asbury Avenue. 909, which goes east, is 913 Asbury Avenue. Lot number 8 and 7 consist of 901, 909, Units A through H, and 911. Lot 6 faces Memorial Drive. That address is 807 Memorial Drive. And Lot 2 is 906 First Avenue.
Okay. Can you tell me the retail stores that are on some of the properties now that I might know by? Are we talking the strip mall next to Memorial?
No.
No?
Ernest, what we're talking about is the development of 917. The other properties are not the subject of this hearing. He just referenced those in response to a question of what else did he own?
Okay. Okay, so in other words, if I look up on my own 917 Asbury Avenue, I can follow along when you get to the more detailed portions, like with the architect and engineer. So if I bring up 917 Asbury Avenue, correct, sir, I should be able to follow along on my own?
I assume you are. I don't know what you're looking at. I don't know what you mean by bring up.
I'm not. That's the problem. I don't have anything to look at, just voice, a virtual voice. So I'm going to Google 917 Asbury Avenue.
Okay.
I guess it's around Memorial Drive.
Yeah.
And that'll at least give me some on my device, some look at what you're talking about.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, thank you. And I'll wait until you get into what's coming next, architectural and engineering, right?
Yeah, there'll be other witnesses in those areas, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else?
There's nobody else. I'd like to call my next witness, Mary Hearn.
Absolutely.
Okay.
There you are. Mary, what do you do for a living?
I'm a licensed architect.
And for how long have you been a licensed architect?
Been a licensed architect for 30 years.
And in that capacity, have you given professional testimony before planning boards and boards of adjustment?
I have. I've actually given testimony in front of the Asbury Park Planning Board 15 years ago. Yes. I'm in front of planning boards and boards of adjustment all the time in the local Monmouth County area. And I sit on walls, Board of Adjustment.
I would request that Mary's professional abilities be, that she be accepted as a professional witness.
I have one question, if I may.
Sure.
Mary, you said you were licensed for 30 years. I assume that that's in New Jersey, correct?
I've licensed 28 years in New Jersey. My first license is in Florida. So I'm licensed in the state of Florida, New Jersey, New York, and Pennsylvania.
I just wanted to clarify that you were licensed here in New Jersey.
Fair enough, yes.
Anybody who raised your right hand? You solemnly swear the testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, again, please state your name for the record and spell it, please.
Mary Hearn, H-E-A-R-N.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary, were you retained by the applicant in this matter?
Yes.
And did he request that you designed the proposed new building?
Yes.
And did you in fact do that?
I did, and I was at the previously discussed June meeting as well, yes.
And did you design the proposed building with the comments of the planning board and the planning board's professionals in mind?
Yes.
And could you just describe for the board the uses that are going to be allowable in the respective parts of the building?
The building is designed with the hope of one or two commercial uses on the first floor, retail, office. And then there are planned two-two-bedroom apartments on the second floor. And they take up part of the third floor, so they're two-story. And then there's a one-story, one-and-a-half-story, one-bedroom apartment that is at the back of the building on the second and third floor.
And you heard the board's comments at the last meeting regarding the importance of Asbury Avenue and the aesthetics?
Yes.
And did you try to design this building with the aesthetics of it in mind?
We did. Jay and I met and we set out to design the building to marry well to the other buildings that he's been developing in the immediate area that he just spoke about. We actually tried to design the building. We actually tried to design the building as if the first floor was built turn of the century in the early 1900s. And then a second and third floor was added later, so we intentionally changed the facade depth, the plane of the facade, the materials, and the aesthetic from the first floor to the second and third floor.
And you're aware that there's a requirement in the ordinance that the materials be the same and the facades be the same on all four sides of the building?
I am now. Jay and I talked about it, when the reports came out is when I was aware of it. Jay and I talked about it early on. There's a material on the front, a fairly new engineered clapboard material, fairly modern-looking, that he has used on the block around the corner. And we think that it will tie this building to that building and look more modern. It's very expensive, so we're hoping that we can put it where we show it and then change to stucco on the balance of the building. If if the board is hard-set that they don't like the three materials on the building, you know, we would consider alternates, but we hope, and we hope that this would be approved, and we think it does fit in well with that immediate micro neighborhood, and it's an upgrade to the front, so that's our hope.
And if, if you literally followed the terms of that ordinance, would you not be able to do the whole building in stucco?
We would be able to do the whole building in stucco. It's not our hope, but again, if that's the board's hope, we could definitely do that.
And with respect to the two sides and the rear of the building, are they as visible from the street as as is the front?
They are not. Obviously, the front faces the street, so the public sees the front. The buildings to either side are fairly close, so you don't see a broad swath of the sides, though this building is planned taller than the other two buildings, so you will see some of it, but the stucco is still attractive. And we are proposing it to be identical in color. So we feel it still carries the color and the richness down the sides, but the back and the sides are not as visible to the public. The back is visible to the tenants of the building. But again, we don't feel it's unpleasing, so.
And you are aware that one of the purposes of the Municipal Land Use Act is to provide a more visual, better visual environment, is that correct?
Yes.
And in your professional opinion, as it's designed, does that accomplish that result?
It does, yes.
With respect to the rooftop equipment, is that the only outside utility equipment? Is that all gathered in one spot there?
Yes, it's fairly central on the roof. It is to the back half, but still in the middle. I, we put screening around three sides of it. That would be a metal louvered screening. We didn't put it across the back for air, and because I didn't feel it would be seen, it's so high. If the board wants, we can add panels across the back that would be hinged, so that would be the access to, you know, maintaining those units, but I don't feel they're going to be seen by many people. You would have to be level with them and on another property to the rear to see them. But again, if the board wants them screened on all four sides, we can do that. It takes louvers that, you know, let enough air through, obviously, but it can be done. We feel they're fairly well-screened now.
And there's a bit of a disconnect between the signage and the signage lighting between the, what you design and what you're showing in your rendering versus what we applied for. Can you just go through the lighting and the signage, the proposed signage and the lighting?
I don't understand the question.
Just one second. Are we going to go through the renderings? Because I know that we're talking about them. Are we going to go through them so we can actually see what Ms. Hearn is talking about?
Do you not have them?
I understand.
Does the board not have them?
Well, we need to see what you're saying. Like which exhibit are we looking at? What page are we looking at specifically? Because we have all of the, we have probably about a good 10, 15 pages of various renderings. So we need to know which one should we be looking at, so you can show them on the screen, so that we're all on the, we all understand, in my opinion.
The, I believe Mary delivered to the planning board a color rendering of the building.
Okay, but I'm trying to get more specific. I'd like to see it on the screen. Everybody shows it on the screen, and which page are we looking at?
I don't have the ability to show it on the screen. Does someone on the board?
Can you see this?
I can see that, but which?
I'm not sure which, I'm not sure what Mark Siegel marked that exhibit.
All right, but if Ms. Hart could tell us, Hart can tell us, all right, which specific rendering are we looking at?
To what point? Do you want me to talk about the front facade or the AC units?
Anything that Mr. Henderson is asking you about. I would like to know where are we looking, so that we can see what you're speaking about.
Not, not a problem.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry to interject. This is Donna Miller. So, I'm sorry, you're saying there are color renderings?
No, there's one.
There's one color rendering. Okay, I have no color renderings in my package, so you know, for the good of the public that have the ability to see, if someone can get that electronically in a way to share around the screens for the public to see as well as for me to see.
I don't know if AP TV has that information.
This is Jack. Can AP TV bring that up as part of the file? That Mark's, that Mark Siegel would have sent to them.
And it looks like this.
All right, what is the number?
That is a colored rendering of 4 of 4 in the architectural drawings, not the engineering drawings.
Yeah, and she doesn't have the official marked exhibit, so.
Excuse me, is exhibit 7 is the color rendering?
Okay, but can we get AP, Andy at AP TV, can you bring that up for us?
I don't have a copy of it. Mark sent me the slideshow, but it's nothing with renderings.
It's on a zip file. And it was sent last Thursday. They would send it Thursday.
We usually have the applicants show this. That's why I'm confused.
I don't have that ability.
I can't, I mean, I can.
Then I can just share it from your screen down here, and you can have it up on yours. Do you have a PDF on your computer?
I can.
Everybody has the ability to share their screen if somebody has it on their desktop.
Give me a second. How about that?
Mr. Harmon, if you press Ctrl-L on your keyboard, it'll become a full screen.
And just to clarify, this is exhibit marked A4.
Yes. Okay, I think we can continue.
So, so to backtrack about the materials, the materials are limestone water table at the base, and then a red brick first-floor facade on the front that wraps the corners. You can see on this exhibit A4, the upper right drawing is the east elevation, and then the lower right drawing is the west elevation, so that red brick would wrap around the corner. And then the the second and third floor step back quite a bit. You can see that also on the elevation, the side elevations, and then the the clapboard on the upper two floors is a mushroom color. It's called Siberian larch by the company Trespa. That's we tried to color-match that as best we could, and then all the metal on the building would be a light bronze. So they're relatively warm earth tones. The window framing would also be a light bronze. The canopies, the light fixtures, the window frames, the screening around the AC units, the metal cap at the top would all be a light bronze. I hate to do this, but if, oh, you can see the AC units on the lower left drawing. And then I don't know if anybody can put the roof plan on. That's sheet 3 of 4 of my drawings. If you want to see the enclosure for the screening of those AC units, because I didn't have that drawing called out when I was talking about it. So we show screening down the southerly facade at the front and down the sides of the units. Thank you, whoever's doing that.
I am.
Thank you, Jay, very much. We do not show solid screening across the northerly part of those four AC units. But we can, if the board wants us to show full screening, they could be hinged gate doors on that side. Again, they sit back over 13 feet from the edge, and the building is tall, so I don't think they'll be seen by many people. They may be seen by somebody at the same exact elevation on another property to the north, so we can enclose them if the board so wishes. Keith, you were on a question that I didn't understand. I'm sorry.
I really wanted you to describe the proposed signage and the lighting.
And you said there was a conflict?
Well, I think there's a little bit of difference between what's proposed on the site plan and what you're showing in your rendering. But I think if you just describe what you're showing on your rendering, you can explain that to the board.
So Jay, I'm sorry to do this. Can you bring up A4 again, the colored front?
Sure.
There you go. Thank you. So we're showing one sign. It says retail space right now. Obviously, that would change when we know the tenant. It was a possibility. It may become two signs side by side and split, but at the same elevation, in the same vicinity, but spread apart. We're showing four gooseneck lights above it that would downlight that sign. That sign is not proposed to be backlit at all. It's just a solid composite flat sign. We don't know the color. We don't know the tenant, but I think we can testify that we will meet the ordinances in terms of size and location and any restrictions that the city has on the signage. We do have the 917 address sign lower on the eastern portion of the front facade. That sign is called out as a 13-foot-wide by 18-inch, 1 foot 6-inch-high signage. It's 19.5 square feet. We do not have signage on the back of the building, but we may add a number to the back. There may be a small sign there. It would be under that canopy. But there's no plan yet. The goal is to have two tenants maximum. I mean, if we get one tenant, that would be great, too. We're not hoping to have any more than the two, so the hope is to not cut off the back parking from, you know, tenants in the front. You would be able to enter from the back to everything that's in the building. I don't, I don't know the conflict, Keith.
Well, I think we can get to that when we get to the reports, when we're going to go through them with the engineer.
Okay.
Oh, I have no more questions for this witness unless members of the board or the public do.
I know that I do. If I may, on the north elevation, what, there are a number of fixtures. One looks like a garage door, one looks like a regular door, and I'm not sure what's on the left. Can you explain those?
Absolutely. On the left are gates that enclose the exterior covered trash enclosures. So those trash enclosures are recessed into the building. So those are just gates that hide them. They would match in material and color to the screening of the AC units, so they'd be a bronze color. There is planned an overhead garage door for loading of things into the back of the building, should that be necessary. And then there's the man door on the right with a transom light above it. And that, of course, would match the bronze framing and glass that matches everything else on the building, so there'd be two entrances at the back. That man door toward the west accesses a vestibule. If you look at, sorry, Jay.
Got it.
Can look at the floor plans, sheet 2 of 4 of the architecturals. Thank you, Jay. So the drawing all the way to the right is the first floor plan. So you can see now we're reversed. All the way to the right on the drawing is that recessed garbage trash and recycling enclosure with gates. And then there's the overhead door in the middle that would have a man door in it if necessary. Or just a man door. And then there's a man door to the left, and that is for the residents that live upstairs. That would be their entrance vestibule, and they would climb that stair to come up to the two residences whose door is on the second floor, and then through a lobby on the second floor, thank you, where it says hall, and then into their unit, right there where it says to the right, entry utility, to the right up, there you go. And then that's their entrance to their unit on the second floor. There you go. So those three openings in the back are for those purposes.
Will you, will you be discussing in the back, or will the engineer be doing that?
You broke up. I'm sorry.
The lighting in the back, will you be discussing that, or will the engineer be discussing?
Well, the building lighting, there's a canopy proposed, and we'd like to put recessed lights under, you know, in the ceiling of that canopy. So the lighting would be just downlit in those canopies for the building itself. The parking lot lighting, I'll defer to the engineer. So if you look at that north elevation on sheet 4 of 4, the bottom left, that's a canopy that rides over both back doors.
Okay.
I'm sorry, this is Donna. Can I just get a clarification of that? The canopy on the rear of the building?
Yeah, if you look at the proposed north elevation on sheet 4 of 4 of the architecturals, there's a canopy down on the left, Jay?
Oh, here. Sorry.
Yep, that's the side elevation of it, and then you see it on the north elevation. It rides across both doors. Right.
Right, so on the site plan, well, actually on your floor plan, the residential doorway is offset, you know, sticks out toward the back of the lot. A couple of feet.
Right, so if you see it on the east elevation, do you see the difference?
So what's the actual depth of the canopy?
The depth of the canopy?
It'll be different.
It's, yeah, it'll vary. It'll be.
Is it going to jog with the facade?
Yeah, it's shown on, it's shown on our sheet 1 of 4.
Right now, I think the issue is it's not shown on your floor plans. It should appear in your second floor floor plan and a dotted line on your first floor floor plan.
So it's. So it's, it's four feet, it's three and a half feet at the western portion, and it is eight feet at the eastern portion. And then it's, it's level across the back. So it's flush across the back in one plane. And you could see that on our sheet one of four.
Proposed roof plan also.
And we can add it to the floor plans. That's, that's what's proposed. So there's enough distance for lighting in there. And for some cover from the weather as you enter the back of the building.
Going right here on page three of the plan, the proposed, proposed canopy, right here.
There's a similar canopy proposed at the front of the building above the second floor doors on the front.
Yeah, but that's. This is Donna again. And I'm sorry, Ms. Hearn, you had said the material on the front facade on the second and third floors is something that's been used before on a neighboring building?
Yes. So Jay had, Jay.
I could jump in here, Mary.
Yep.
Donna, the material is a high pressure laminate. And think of it as a thick, like Formica material.
I'm just curious, which building is it? I've got.
It's, if you look at 911 Hasbury Avenue, the studio.
Okay.
It's on the soffits there. It's in a wood tone. And then if you can zoom back, if you're on Google Maps to 909, much of the upper structure is that material and also in the on the soffits, as well as the patio that comes out. It's in horizontal and vertical installation designs there.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks Jay.
And for further reference, if you look at the newer Starbucks and Dunkin' Donuts, they're using the same product all over the country. What a rain screen, actually.
Hi, this is Rick Lambert. I have a question. Looking at the east and west elevations, like at the front of the building, there's the canopy on the second floor. Then there's some kind of divider between, I guess that's divided between the two different residential units.
That's correct.
What is that, what is that made of?
That would be sided in that same material, the Trespia.
Okay. So it's not like, it's not louvered, it's a solid.
It's a solid, right. You're just seeing the clapboard, yeah.
Okay.
Any other, any other testimony?
Not from us unless the board has further questions or the members of the public do.
Anyone from the board have any questions of Ms. Hearn? If not, are we thinking? Before I go to the public? Right, is, do our professionals have any questions? Because we really haven't gone to your report yet, so. Okay, can we open it to the public? Let me see if there's anybody in the public that has raised their hand. No one has raised their hand. So let's move forward. Who was your next witness?
Ma'am, I'm sorry if I may, may I, I just want to ask, are you going to testify to the layouts of the, or cover any of the layouts of the upper floor apartments or how the building is divided?
I'm happy to. I can do that now if, if you'd like, because I don't think that was a specific point in either of the reports.
But, but just to be clear, I, I, just to be.
Yeah, I guess, yes, one of the issues is you have these windows. How, what is the distance between, on your west elevation? What is the distance between that and the next adjoining property? That's pretty small, is that?
5.33 feet.
And you're, so one of these sides of the building. Well, I guess that's, Donna, that it's only five feet is required, correct?
Sorry, yes.
But they could alternately do a lot line building if the adjacent use is commercial, correct?
There are options, yeah. I mean, hang on, I just want to go back because we did change the B district bulk requirements did change. And I just want to make sure I'm thinking of the right thing because I'm yeah, they could have zero setback on the sides. Then they would just have to comply with whatever building code requirements for, you know, fire rating airspace.
I'm, I'm just really curious about the presence or of the windows so close to the lot line when there's no control over what's next door.
Well, again, we have 5.33 feet, so other than anything that might be in your zoning ordinance, we meet all criteria in the building code. We're not restricted in any way in our openings. If we were less than five feet, we would be restricted to 10%. If we were less than three feet, we would be restricted to no openings unless we had fire sprinklers. So we're well within our, our building code safety.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, I understand.
Okay.
And Mr. Galoppo, it is, you know, one of those things where it's kind of like the gold rush, whoever gets here first.
Yeah, yeah.
So if the, you know, the adjoining building eventually redevelops, they're the one that are burdened with how to design to accommodate this condition.
So just to, if you wouldn't just mind testifying for us, there are how many apartments on the second floor?
There are two proposed apartments on the second floor. They're, they take up the majority of the depth of the building. And then they are two-story. So the bedrooms for those two apartments are on the front of the third floor. And then.
The front apartments are duplex apartments?
No, they're two-bedroom apartments.
Duplex up and down.
They are two-story, right.
Yes.
And then they, so again, you would come in the back door into the vestibule that we talked about before. And if you want to follow, I'm on sheet two of four of my drawings are the floor plans. You'd come up the stair to a common hallway. And then there's a door to each of the three apartments near the back. Right, thank you Jay.
The one bedroom.
Right, that's the door that leads you to the one bedroom. And then the other two doors each lead you to the first floor of the two-bedroom apartments. And then they have a large utility room, a half bath, a nice coat closet, an extra closet in the hallway, and then an open floor plan kitchen dining living room.
What, not, what is the approximate square footage of each of the two front apartments?
That's a great question.
1360, I think.
And that's two bedrooms?
So apartment number two is 1,241 square feet. And the same for the other two bedrooms. So 1,241 square feet each.
And they're two bedrooms apiece?
That's correct. And then the rear one-bedroom apartment is 735 square feet. And that's listed on the cover sheet of my project data on one of four.
Thank you, guys.
And then to follow upstairs, if you go through the door that Jay showed on the second floor to the entry of the one, one-bedroom apartment, then there's another interior stair that's private to that unit. And that takes you up to the, to the one-story, third-floor, one-bedroom apartment. So that has an open floor plan dining kitchen living room, one bedroom, one bath, and a half bath for, for company, and a coat closet. And their washer dryer and utilities are near their entry on the second floor. Thanks Jay.
And you're counting that small amount of square footage on the second floor? In that, in that 735?
Yes.
Okay.
And we've planned for HVAC stacks to happen properly to get to those units on, on the rooftop. You know, there's a shared wall that will be fire rated and soundproofed. Everything is to meet code.
So your risers are coming through that chase in the middle?
Yes. They will serve the first floor commercial space as well.
What is the ceiling height of the commercial space on the first floor?
Don't know the answer to that. Hang on. I will know it. And that's shown on sheet four of four, 11 foot?
11. Would you? Is that adequate head height for, like, what, what kind of uses would fit in that 11 feet?
Well, I'm an architectural.
Okay, we'll speak to the planner.
Okay.
I will. It does have to do with, I guess, what are the uses that, do you, you, you assume this is just going to be basic retail and/or office?
Yes.
There's not a whole lot of extra space for heavy ventilation for food service. Is that allowed Donna? What's allowed in this zone? Everything?
Well, what are you, what are you thinking of?
I'm just thinking like a small cafe or a cooking facility. Is that allowed?
Yes. Yeah, you know, it's a wide range of retail sales and service, so I think bars might be the only thing not.
Yeah, I, you know, I just would, you know, question maybe a little more floor height would be more attractive to a wider range of uses on the first floor.
11 foot is pretty decent height. Three foot more than standard residential ceiling height, so.
It's not atypical for a first floor to hit 14 to account for ventilation and other.
Right, but I think also we're, they're trying to sort of match the scale. You know, the other retail and commercial buildings, you know, that's the other kind of dynamic going on here. So the building next door to the east is kind of squat, right? Across the street or along the squat, so.
Well, we're, we're talking a couple of feet, not, you know.
Right, so it's either they take it out of the interior, right, and, and move the residential up higher in order to keep that streetscape scale.
Okay. Thank you. That's, those are my questions.
Anybody else have any other questions for Ms. Hearn? Okay, let's open it up to the public. And it looks like we have a hand up for, last digits 350. AP TV, would you open, would you mind unmuting? Thank you. Right, 350.
Yes.
You're up.
Ernst, we know only 400 Del Lake Drive, Hasbury Park, New Jersey. So in order to help myself, I'm at the location that we're talking about, because I live in Hasbury, so here I am. And I, I think I'm going to ask a question. So we're, we're talking in this commercial area installing some new or refurbished area apartments? Or are you adding to these buildings? I mean, just as an overview.
We're knocking down the existing building at the back of the property and building a, a brand new three-story building with retail or commercial space on the first floor and three new residential apartments on the second and third floor.
So you know how difficult it is without? So I'm looking at the big building on the corner, right? It looks like, is that the one that was going to be the firehouse?
It's just east of that. It's, it's, there's a fence.
There's a fence and then there's an old barn or something?
To the back of the building, to the back of the property. That's, that's the subject property there.
Oh, I get it. So I'm on Hasbury Avenue. I'm looking at the front of the building. You're not, you're not taking that whole building down, or are you? The big, the concrete building? Well, it's the one across, it's I'm looking right at it. It's the, oh, I, I see what we're talking, you're talking about the building that says available on it, on the Hasbury Avenue side, nine, no?
Excuse me, excuse me. I was supposed to be having questions for this witness based on the.
Okay, okay, here we go. So why don't you do it peek-a-boo style so the public can't know what you're talking about? So I, I don't have any questions. That's typical of how you guys operate, you know, you just interrupt people. Nobody can get an idea of what you're talking about. And then you bring.
Thank you. Anyone else? I don't see anybody else from the public that has their hand up. Your next witness?
Paul Anderson.
Evening.
Paul, what do you do for a living?
I'm a licensed professional engineer and planner.
Why don't we get him under oath first?
Sure.
Please raise your right hand, sir. Do you solemnly swear the testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please state your name for the record.
Paul W. Anderson, A-N-D-E-R-S-O-N.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, you indicated you're an engineer and a planner. Do you have licenses from the state of New Jersey on both of those different professions?
Yes, I've been licensed as a professional engineer in New Jersey since 1988. My license is current. And it was as a planner, I've been licensed for 13 years. And that license is also current. On the principle with Anderson Consulting Services, we prepared the site plans for this evening. I've been accepted before the Hasbury Board on the application we did two properties down for 901 to 911 as an expert witness. And I've been accepted before numerous other boards throughout the state of New Jersey as a professional engineer and a professional planner.
Madam Chairwoman, I would just request that she be accepted as an expert witness in the fields of engineering and planning.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Anderson, could you give us a brief description of the project from an engineer's perspective and a planner's perspective?
Sure, I'd like to actually, Jay, if you could bring up the exhibits for, or actually just tell me what the exhibit number is for the, for the site plans. I have it on my screen, I can share it.
I have it right here, site plan. Okay, how's that Paul?
That's good. Exhibit A1. All right, so you can see the property is a small lot, lot 403, lot 10, which is hatched in the middle of the screen here. Can you see my cursor? Or is?
It's mine.
Just yours, okay. Just yours. Okay. All right, um. And the applicant proposes has been stated to remove a building that's in the rear of the lot uh back here and uh construct a new building in the front with parking in the rear. Um, this was after our previous meeting is as Keith had indicated uh where there are some reservations as to leaving the existing building in the back. Uh, we have designed it with parking in the rear, and since Jay owns the property on lot nine, uh, we have uh drawn this up with a shared driveway that's eighteen feet wide. Um, Jay, if you can go back to the site plan, please?
I'm on page SP one?
Uh, probably, yeah, don't keep going. It's probably SP uh three, please.
There you go.
All right, so you have a shared driveway uh where we're proposing a driveway easement to define who maintains it long term. Uh, right now, it's simple because Jay owns both of the properties. If it's ever sold, the easement will dictate uh who's responsible for plowing, paving, and all the other items. As you can see here on the layout, we have eight parking spaces in the back. Uh, we have been able to uh take the zoning of the past building. We had some existing nonconformities, including rear yard setback, side yard setback and uh cut lot coverage. And now we are conforming in all of those uh bulk standards. Uh, so we have a five-foot uh strip along the at the first floor level all the way through, which is going to be a planted buffer. Uh, we have some planting in the front also. Um. As Mary indicated, there's going to be a door in the back that has access to the commercial space. Uh, so we have accessibility from the handicap space right into the commercial space without using the driveway. However, if someone wanted to go around to the front, it would not be a problem because we anticipate this to be a fairly low volume driveway. Uh, uh, Jay's existing business at uh nine, uh nine oh, was it nine?
Nine thirteen.
Nine thirteen. Gets maybe one truck a week and there's very little traffic and the eight cars parking here is a is a low number. So I think it's going to be a fairly low access uh driveway. Um, the eighteen feet is uh not does not meet the design standards for Asbury Park for a two-way driveway, but I think is is uh justifiable width because of the low volume it actually has. Uh, it is of sufficient size to allow access by emergency vehicles and garbage trucks uh to the for the site and and delivery trucks of as need be. Uh, there's no loading space associated with that this application as uh commercial spaces with less than three thousand square feet of uh floor area did not require a loading space or the Asbury code. Um. What else do we have here? Um. We have on if we go to the the utility plan next, Jay, which is she one sheet that uh yeah, one sheet in. So this uh we have the existing building in the back, which is similar size, and it has uh existing utility connections for uh sewer and water and gas. And we're going to try to reuse all those existing utilities because we believe they're they have the same capacity that'll be needed for this uh for this project, for this building. Uh, the one thing that we are adding is a storm drainage connection for the roof leaders in the parking lot. We've designed the building to flow away from the building into a basically to a swale that runs around to this inlet that's in the driveway and then out to uh Asbury Avenue. Uh, and one of the comments, which I'll get to later, uh and identify the number indicates there's maybe a low point in the system out in Asbury Avenue. Um, I think we have to do some more research with regard to the system that's out there to further define that. It may actually limit the work that we're have to do in Asbury Avenue. Um. Jay, if you could please go to the uh landscape plan next, please? Okay, so as I was saying before, this is the landscaped area. We have some arborite is planted along here, which will create a nice uh buffer along the western property line, then a grass lawn, and then some more plantings in the front of the building. Uh, if you were out to look at the site uh recently, uh, you'll notice that Jay's property to to the right side uh has some nice plantings in the two uh grass areas in front of the building. And this plan will mimic uh what Jay has done there in in the past. There's some mention of uh invasive species, and I apologize for that. We won't have any invasive species on our plant list. Uh. Jay, if you can go to the lighting plan, please? So with the lighting plan, we have two pole-mounted lights at sixteen feet high, which are noted with the A in the parking lot. And we have two building-mounted uh lights on the side of the building. Uh, those are the uh lights that we're using to uh they're LED lights with very good cutoffs and and there to light the parking lot itself and the driveway. Uh, with exception of the driveway where we have the shared access easement, the you can see that the uh lighting intensities at the property line on the west and northern side are cut off very nicely uh to the to the property line uh around the point five-foot candles or less at the property line and and adequate light inside the parking uh lot itself. Now, the one comment was that uh this does not reflect the gooseneck lighting that's shown over the sides or the canned lighting that's under the canopy that Mary was talking about. And uh those are relatively minor light sources, um. And and they will not change the intensities of these lights. We will update the lighting plan to reflect them. Uh, but I wouldn't anticipate that they create any need for variance relief uh for the lighting intensity for the lighting code at Asbury Park. Um. So that is the overview of this project from an engineering perspective. It is a minor project, so in turn uh stormwater wise, so there's no need for stormwater management. We're actually reducing the uh impervious coverage on the site, so less of it will less stormwater will be running off. And it will certainly be better controlled with the inlet connecting the roof leaders and everything to Asbury Avenue uh drainage system.
Paul, um, in addition to the required site plan approval, do you identify the municipal land use requirements um with respect to variances and waivers that are required for the site?
Yes, I can. Uh, the first variance is for parking. Um. We have a total of eight parking spaces proposed. If you go through the mathematics for what is required for the commercial space at one per two fifty and uh and and uh the and for the residential, you end up with a requirement of actually twelve and one-half parking spaces. And then there's a provision in the ordinance that allows uh the reduction for shared parking of one-half of the residential component, which is five spaces. Half of that is two and a half. So I believe that the required parking uh for this this project is uh is ten, and we provide eight, so we would need variance relief for two parking spaces.
But actually, you but actually you have seven. Because one is ADA, so if you have no ADA, you actually have seven.
Well, the ADA space counts as a space towards your count.
Um, could you discuss the variance for that we need for building materials?
Yes, uh, variance with section thirty seventy-one point five H four. They want the building materials to be consistent on all four sides of the building, and as Mary had explained previously, uh, we could do it with a a stucco material on all on all four sides. However, they wanted to upgrade the front of the building where it's most visible to have uh a siding that uh was more reflective of the immediate neighborhood and uh was more more attractive in keeping with the uh early nineteen hundred uh design that she had mentioned. Um. The the next one is a variance for pedestrian friendly design. Uh, basically, we're looking for uh, you know, street furniture. Uh. We don't feel the street furniture is appropriate here in in this particular location unless we're doing some kind of outdoor cafe, which is not envisioned at this point. Uh. So we we request that waiver because we just don't feel that having a seating area outside of a an office building is uh is a good thing for this section of the town.
And Paul, isn't that the same area you're describing that was going to be landscaped to match the property next door?
That that's correct. That's the place where we would put it, so we would end up taking out some of the landscaping to put in uh a bench or 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 some kind of seating or bike rack or something else uh of that nature that would satisfy the requirements of that section of the ordinance.
Um, and uh I believe you also discussed a couple of design waivers.
That's correct.
And let's go to the easy one first. Uh, there's one tree required per fifty feet of street frontage. Um, we originally asked for a design waiver, but the applicant has indicated his willingness to plant one tree.
That is correct. We would take that one off the table, off the application.
And that leaves the minimum distance to the property line or intersecting street?
Well, I think that the the problem here is the distance from the driveway to the property line because we have a shared driveway. So uh if you have a, you know, it's it's straddling the property line, so there's no way around that. So that design waiver is, you know, something that is the the urban design standards that you have in Asbury Park encourages shared driveways. And so I I think it's counter to that designer requirement.
And finally, let's turn first to the engineering review dated October twenty-six, two thousand and twenty with respect to the completeness reviews um uh starting at number one, um. Are there items there that we will stipulate to?
Yes, uh, one, two, three, four, and five. Uh, we will, we will provide those after. Uh, they are, the information is there sometimes, but not in the correct location. Uh, item six, eight, ten, uh, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, I believe, have already been satisfied. And I can go over those one at a time if if it's desired.
Madam Chairwoman, at any point when you want, if you want an explanation as to a specific item, if you would just uh direct the question to Paul. Um, and item seven doesn't exist there. Is that correct? There isn't any item seven?
Yeah, there's some missing in the number system there.
So a couple of things. This is Jason, board engineer. Uh, we wrote for the application appeared before the board in June, we wrote a review letter. This letter is an update to that letter, so seven was eliminated. That's why that's not there, and you'll see that throughout the letter.
Oh.
Um, regarding um you mentioned six to thirteen already satisfied. One thing I think the board would like to hear is regarding number thirteen. Uh, we talked about the equipment that's on the roof and the screening. How about electric and gas meters? What is the plan for those?
Uh, that, you know, that's really a a question for Mary where she wants she wants to put them. Mary, or can you address that?
I can. Mary Hearn, architect. Uh, the meters can go either on the very back of the building, behind the stair, or if the city allows on the west facade.
Where would it be on the west facade?
Near the it would be at the back, near the stairs. Obviously, on the outside of the building.
Yep, and if, well, I I guess it's for the board's consideration, but would there be any form of screening of those meters in either?
I believe there's already landscaping planned, and we can increase the landscaping to the board's uh request. We'd be happy to do that.
It's uh, this is Paul Anderson again. That that's a five-foot space there with you have uh the one-story building right on the property line next door, so there's and there's no windows on it. There's no visibility from the adjoining property, and it would be the depth of the building behind the street, so I I think it has very limited visibility. Um. We could certainly put a few shrubs in front of it, but I don't think it's going to be very visible from from anybody, uh, unless they're looking for it.
Can can you show us where that's going to be?
I'm trying to pull it up right now, and the screen's frozen.
Okay.
Just give me a minute.
Well, even on that floor plan, Jay.
Yes.
It would be at the very rear behind the stair or on the side of the stair on the first floor plan.
I'm trying to get to that right now, but it would be right. Can you see where the?
Yes.
Two maps are overlapping each other for some reason right now, but my cursor is, it would be back in this area.
Yes.
Or on the side of the building, Jay.
On the side of the building, right at the stair, right?
Uh, yeah, right around the corner from where you're you're noting.
Just, no, it's just not. So hold that. You want to take a look? I'm sorry. The screen just started slowing down. It's the internet. Everybody's been pixelated. Is there a limit on Zoom? On limit? Uh, the architectural plans. I'll close one of the files out for some losers.
Um, you can stop sharing and try again.
Try again.
Here, I can show them on my site plans. If you want me to share my screen.
Yeah, we're do we still need to look at the architectural where the meters would go, Jason? Were you satisfied with that answer?
I understood what you're talking about. I don't know if the board would like to see further.
I I kind of would, if you don't mind.
Okay, just give us a minute here.
Sure.
Then I just plug into the battery. I don't have anything else open. I squeezed ghosting.
Unless Mr. Anderson can show it.
Yeah, if he could just show it, that would be better.
Paul, can you pull up Mary's plans there, the architect?
Yeah, I I don't have hers, but I can show it on mine. Uh, let me.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
Um, I can get you on another computer. Let me try that.
Mr. Anderson, you can give us what we're looking for.
I'm trying to.
Files go to you.
There you go.
Yeah.
All right, so what we're talking about is this area back here.
I think it is.
Can can you uh, can you see this?
Yes.
Okay, let me, I just zoomed in a little bit. Let me. So we're talking about an area back here.
Correct.
Next to the stairwell. And what I was saying is, this is a one-story building here to the left. And uh, there's no windows, and there's so nobody's going to see the meters out windows here. And uh, from the front, from Asbury Avenue, it's a five-foot width, and it's all the way back here at the back of the building. So uh, we do have the evergreen planting all the way along this area here. We could add some more smaller shrubs in front of it, but I don't even know if it's necessary because I think that it's just in a place where it's not really that visible.
So so are we still at five? Like, what's the distance now? It's five feet, so there would be even less at that point?
Uh, to to the gas, to the utilities, yeah.
Yeah, to the utilities, to the to the to the line of the property.
Right, from the from the gas meter to the property line would be less than the five feet.
So does that may have include another variance?
I I don't think so. Um. I I have to go back and look over the, but the building itself is is meets the zone requirement. Certainly, the building is permitted to be zero or five feet. There's no two and a half or three permitted.
Okay.
But I I I don't think for utilities, it's it's an issue.
Okay. You want to continue on the the document?
Yes. The next design waiver we have, well, we were talking about, we talked about the distance to the property line. The property line being here in the driveway straddles it. So that's the area that we were talking about before. And then we also talked about adding one street tree, which I envisioned, right? We have to look at the spacing of the other trees in the neighborhood, but probably just to the left of where the sidewalk comes out up in the street lawn. All right. So those are the those are the variances now. Keith, where were we on the, uh, we're at thirteen?
We were on the completeness reviews and we had finished that. And Jason had a question on on the one that I think we've answered. So I think we are now on the the zoning review.
Fourteen, Keith.
I'm sorry?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Yeah. Which I think you testified to.
Right. Yes, fourteen. We talked about the the parking and the fact that it was twelve and a half is required by calculation. Then once you get to the share, it becomes ten. Variance or two spaces. And then, um, let's see, we got fifteen.
Excuse me, Jack Serpico, Board Attorney. Are you sure it becomes twelve and a half, not thirteen? And then with the two spaces, it becomes eleven versus ten?
Well, if I was stopping at, you know, and determining how many spaces I need, it was 12.47. So I would round down.
Uh, what is, where's Donna? Where's Donna? Donna? Hello?
Sorry, muted.
Donna. Uh, planner's indicating you got 12.47 required spaces. Is it rounded up or down? How many, how many spaces are needed here? Twelve and a half, 12.4?
Twelve, twelve and a half. And all's I did is if I was stopping there, I would leave it, I I would say either 12 or 13. Okay, and 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 go for that way. But since we have the shared parking and that happens to be two and one half, it it works out nicely to 10 spaces required.
Donna, is that correct?
Uh, well, I mean, there's kind of
I'm not disputing it. I just, if it if it's correct.
Our calculation is 13 spaces based on the gross floor area, which the ordinance requires you measure from the exterior of the building. So, um, you know, I think it's 1800 and like 50 square feet, I think. It's almost 1900 square foot footprint. For so, um, we get eight parking spaces out of that calculation for the for the commercial. And then under residential parking, there's the the city standard and there's the RSIS standard. It's either five spaces or four spaces. So it's five spaces under the, you know, chapter 30. And it's, um, so it'd be eight, it would be 12 spaces with RSIS. So that's that's how we've calculated it. I'm not sure Jason has gotten a different opinion about that, but.
That's fine. Okay.
So if we cover that both both ways, if, you know, if we assume that the 13 is oh, is correct, then you subtract the two and a half for the shared parking, you end up with 10 and a half required or 11, which would ground to 11.
All right. I just wanted to clarify it. I'm not disputing.
Well, it's important. I I agree. We should clarify it.
All right, keep keep going. Keep going. Thanks, Donna.
Jay talked about the trash being picked up and once a week and recycling picked up once a week. On number 16, Mary addressed the signage indicating that it could be two signs of similar split size on the front of the building and she described the materials. Same thing, Mary addressed item 17. Uh, because there's no loading space required, uh, we basically are just going to pull a truck in when it's required for people moving into apartments, maybe by appointment. So we can do it at a low volume time and and unload behind the the existing parking spa, uh, parking spaces that we're proposing. And then, uh, once that's over, uh, you know, pull it out, you know, the truck would turn around and leave. We don't anticipate that's going to be a high incidence uh, once a week, maybe for the commercial. And residences residents will probably, you know, maybe the worst case, three times a year or so. Uh, but probably less frequent than that. Uh, on 19, we will provide a revised lighting plan that shows those lights. But as I indicated before, I don't think there'll be a significant change in the intensity, certainly nothing that threatens the conformance with the ordinance requirement. We talked, I also talked about the building utility connections being, we're we're going to reuse the existing ones, existing ones, and we believe they're of adequate size uh, to support the new building. This building is not, uh, you know, 21 talks about noise, air and water quality. Uh, we have a property where we're actually reducing impervious coverage. Uh, we're collecting the water, uh, you know, I think from its current use, what it is now to what we're proposing, it should be an improvement in water quality and certainly noise, there won't be a auto repair shop there any longer and and certainly air quality, we're talking about a retail building or an office building with some residences. So I I think it's a very low impact from the noise, air and water quality aspect. We talked about the screening of the HVAC units on the on the roof. And they would have to meet the noise standards of the state uh, with the screening on on the around that. Uh, number 22.
You said you're collecting water?
We are. We have an inlet that collects the the roof, the waters from the roof and the parking lot and then discharges it to Asbury Avenue.
Oh, you're not reducing the stormwater. You're just collecting the stormwater.
I'm collecting it, but there's a minor reduction because there's less impervious. We have, it's the entire site is paved currently and and we're going to be down 10% or so. Twenty-two is, uh, we would like to be resurfacing, but I think the air, uh, almost the entire site is going to be repaved uh, with new full depth pavement, which I show on this drawing on the screen in a gray tone. Uh, there is some change in grades. There's also the fact that in the back where the building was is going to be all new pavement. And just around the new building, the pavement is not likely to survive. So we anticipate that that's all new pavement within that gray hatched area that we have on the plan. Twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, we will comply with. Twenty-six, Mary has addressed already. I believe. And then 27, let's see. The recycling, I I'm not sure how we testify about four weeks of recycling material. We stored it at the site. We, since we don't know what the uses are other than the residences uh, and it's picked up once a week. So I'm not certain as to what that comment is looking for, maybe. If, uh, if, you know, maybe you could ask it a different way so I understand what you're looking for.
Well, we want to be sure that there's adequate space for both refuse and recycling. Uh, and I think that the architect provided that testimony unless the board has further questions on it. Uh, we're not necessarily looking for detailed calculations for this project that that is possible to do, but unless the board feels the need, I don't, I don't think we need that for this project.
Great. Thank you. On 28, um, let's see. And I'm not exactly sure what 28 is looking for either in terms of the dimensioning of the driveway. We have between the building, the two buildings, 18 feet. Uh, we do provide, are providing an an access easement, which I've shown the meets and bounds of on the site plan, which is just a few sheets before this, and that will be submitted as a legal document for review uh, prior to filing.
Um, we're going to require, um, this is Jack Serpico speaking. We're going to require a cross easement agreement between the two properties to be recorded.
Right.
Want freehold.
And Jack, that's already been prepared and submitted to the board.
Okay. All right. So then I need to see those.
You just need to see a draft. In fact, I will email one to you tomorrow.
Yeah, Jason and I'll take a look at it. Okay, thanks.
I'll send it to Jason, too.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, there's no item 30, 31, I believe, was addressed by the applicant with the
29 for a second there.
Sure.
This comment appears a couple of times throughout the letter. Uh, have you guys submitted this plan to the county yet?
We have not, but in looking at the county standards, it indicates it's a rare, it's a special circumstance when they would require site triangles for a driveway. Uh, I don't think that's going to, this is going to be one of those special circumstances. If it was one of those special circumstances, we have to go 90 feet back from the center line of the road intersection, which would mean the entire plan we're talking about would go away.
Understood. I I just, uh, that's going to be a county jurisdiction matter. Uh, there's a few things on this plan that I think the county is going to weigh in on that that we'd be interested to tie into the site. Um, access, safety of access is one of them, however they want to handle the the site, uh, site distances. Uh, also, this this will come up later as you go through the letter, but the sidewalk along, um, along Asbury Ave there appears to be a bit steep. Uh, so when we think about our public access along the public right of ways, uh, that's something that that should probably be addressed as well. So anyway, the point of all that, uh, we'd like to be kept apprised of your application and progress with the county.
Very well. We will, uh,
stipulate to that.
Do that.
Yeah. And Jack Serpico, again, for your edification and knowledge, uh, all of resolutions that I prepare, assuming the project gets approved with this, with the conditions, which is typically outside agency approvals, whatever they may be. Uh, and in the event, uh, any outside agency alters the plans as approved by the board, it's a requirement that you have to come back to the board for their review and approval of those alterations.
We, yeah, applicants have made aware of those issues.
Okay, good. Okay, just want to let you know. Okay.
You've addressed 31.
Okay, uh, 32. Uh, we're redoing the entire driveway apron between 913 and 917. Uh, and we're repairing the curb to a full height curb all the way across the front and removing any other depressed, uh, you know, any other access. You know, it's all being replaced. So that, uh, I don't see any other impact to other driveways for, say, the adjoining. We'll tie in before then and certainly before we get down to 911, I don't, we're we're going to be nowhere near that.
Hi, this is Rick Lambert. I have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, so you're talking about the curb. Uh, so, um, west of the the new driveway that you're going to put in there, um, it's like concrete apron all the way down to the curb. And to the east of the site, there is, um, like the sidewalk is regular and then there's like a right of way that I think is is a grassy area. And I assume that you're going to put the tree somewhere in that concrete apron. Is it, is it possible to restore that sidewalk so that it it matches the sidewalk to the west of, to the east of the site so that you kind of, you know, kind of restoring the the streetscape like it was supposed to be? I'm sure this was all cemented when it was on auto repair and they were just driving in and out. But, um, is it, there's some way to maybe do that to remove less concrete apron?
Yes, we could provide a street lawn across the front matching the street lawn to the east of it.
Yeah, that would be great.
That will give us a location to put the street tree without a tree grate. I think it's a, it's a good solution.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Uh, Jim Henry, um, just to follow up on what Rick has just discussed. I'd like to address this comment to Jason. When when that street tree is put in, I think you ought to take a look at the location so that you don't get into a, uh, problem with site distance on Asbury Avenue. Uh, Asbury Avenue, as you know, is a heavily trafficked the street and cars coming out of that driveway might have a problem. So if, uh, uh, Jason would take a look at the location for that tree so that it doesn't get in the way of, uh, your vision uh, of anybody pulling out of that driveway.
So that's a very good point. Um, and that's going to go into the county's jurisdiction. So what I would ask the applicant to do there is when you submit to the county, uh, show the street tree on your plan. So that's part of their review for the site.
Yes, will do.
If I, if I may just go back and answer Rick's question on the curbing, I do have a few pieces of the original uh, blue stone curbing that I intend on replacing. So there's continuity up to the, up to Memorial Drive.
That would be great.
And there's, I think we'll pick up about 14 foot of, uh, depression there that is currently used by 917. I think we're going to net about 10 foot of street parking. Curbing.
Okay, continue or?
Continue.
Yeah, uh, 33, uh, you've testified to that already, the driveway and the interaction of the, uh, driveways and the easement. So we're good on 33.
Good. Uh, 34 has been struck. Well, uh, on 30, 35, uh, I believe I've already satisfied this. I I, if you look at my spot grades on this plan, it 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 slopes away from the building and then down to the corner. Uh, but Jason, if, uh, we submit final plans, if you still don't feel that that's the case, we can discuss it, but I I think it already uh, does drain away from the building.
I don't want to get buried too much in the weeds here, but I I do want to ask one question on your philosophy of of grading in the rear parking lot. Um, I'm just looking at the grading plan, the proposed contours and your spot shots versus existing. A couple of things come to mind. It looks like you're cutting quite a bit out of there. Is that intentional?
Uh, yes, because we have to set the front of the building to be ADA accessible. So the, you know, you go from the existing sidewalk grade or very nearly that, if we replace that sidewalk with one that's less sloped, it might be a little bit different, but generally that existing sidewalk grade and you go up at an acceptable slope, uh, which is going to be 2% right in front of the doors for four feet. You're really not coming up very much from that elevation. And then we have a rear access door that has to match the elevation in the front. By the time we get to the back, uh, the existing grade is much lower, so we do end up with quite a bit of cut.
All right, so we should, the the grading plan, I think, should be, a little more detail should be added to that to show how we're going to marry up to the adjacent properties. For example, the property behind, which I think is lot two. We're showing a top of curb of 18.7 back there proposed. And it looks like the grade of the property is like a foot, a little over a foot lower than that.
And I got, I got grades that, yeah, a little over a foot lower than that.
So, which, you know, that's So, which, you know, that's all well and good, but let's, uh, add, you know, to the plan to make sure we don't have any conflict with the, the neighboring properties. And then the other thing is, um, this comes up later in the letter. Uh, we're asking questions about an LSRP on the property. Uh, if we're going to be taking that much cut out of there, we want to make sure that that's all properly, if that's contaminated.
My understanding is the monitoring well in the front that you were speaking of in your review letter is for an adjacent property, it's not for this site. So, uh.
If you look at lot eleven on the plan, um, there's mon- monitoring wells on that. There's at least three monitoring wells on that lot, then there's one in the right of way in front of that too.
Right, so, it's, it, this is a monitoring well, we believe for lot eleven. Uh, not for contamination on this site.
Okay.
Uh, thirty.
So you've discussed, um, how the stormwater is going to work, so that you've testified to.
And then, uh, thirty-seven, we also talked about, we have not made the Monmouth County submission, but it's a it would be something we do after, uh, this board's decision.
Yep. So I think, uh, thirty-eight, you've testified to, uh, thirty-nine and forty are informational.
Right. Um, forty-one, I've testified to. Forty-two is what we were just talking about with the monitor well. Uh, you, you know, I, I, with regard to be, uh, site suitable for the proposed use, it's in accordance with the, the current zoning. I'm not sure why on C you're looking for an HS twenty loading for the monitor well, it's going to be in a grass area. Uh, and it, if we don't have to modify it, we would prefer not to. And then D, obviously, it's the joiners, it's LSRP. Uh, forty-three is what I discussed before that I have to go back and find out, it, it appears that the pipe, uh, that runs in, uh, Asbury Avenue may continue all the way down to, uh, the interse- the, the next intersection, although there's no survey record that we could find of it. And I can't find a, a pipe that actually goes in, so I have to look, work with the county to see. Cause it, it may be that we only have to build this section of the storm drainage extension that we have here.
Yeah.
Uh, forty-four, we will agree, we will add, uh, discussion about the lighting in the easement documents that are provided to you. And we will be submitting revised lighting plan also that in, that adds the goosenecks fixtures, uh, the ones that are shown on the architectural plans.
Okay, and forty is the width of the driveway which you testified to earlier.
Correct. As far as turning movements, the, the, the parking lot in the back is fairly standard, it's a twenty-four foot plus aisle, turning in and backing out, uh, coming out onto Asbury Avenue. Uh, we have approximately twenty-five feet from the base of the building to the curb line where people can creep out and, and get visibility on, in each direction. It's, as you know, Asbury Avenue is straight and flat in that area, and, uh, the only thing that could potentially block, uh, view is parked cars. And, uh, so I think we have, uh, good ability to turn from the site. Uh, it might take some patience to get looked past, uh, parked cars though.
And delivery vehicles you talked about earlier, that's, uh, going to be, either be by appointment or it's going to be a pull-in and back-out situation.
Well, they can turn, they can turn around in the back here too. Uh, we really don't anticipate tractor trailers, more box trucks. Uh, and so, those would easily be able to come in here and turn around and, and leave headfirst.
Is that area back there that you were just outlining, is that part of the easement?
It is, uh, not currently part of the easement.
Should we make that part of the easement for, uh, turnaround?
Um. Yeah, I, although I think most of the trucks going back there are probably going to be for that, uh, the nine hundred eighty's building anyway. Uh, but yes, we can, we can modify the easement to include a portion of that.
Okay.
Uh, we agree with the list of the other approvals required.
Thank you.
Alright, now I'd like, go, just looking at this from a planning perspective.
Oh, just, can, can we just hold on a second? Are we, the engineering portion, have we concluded that?
Well, they, you can, you can finish this up with Jason's letter. If the board wants to discuss it or ask additional questions, you could, or take a break and, you know, ask that now. Or if you wanted to wait until we finish with your planner's report, um, I'll leave that up to the board.
Well, at this point, um, usually around the nine o'clock hour, we usually take a five-minute break. And I'd like to suggest that as a, a better, this is not a bad time to do so, since we're finishing up with the engineering and then going to the planning. Um, so if we could, um, get a motion for a five-minute break?
Jim Henry, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed? None, okay, go ahead.
Yes, uh, let's call the meeting back to order, it is nine eleven PM.
Okay, let's take, uh, attendance to make a roll call. Uh, John Moore, absent. Ivan Clayton, absent. Michael Manzella, absent. Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Spatter.
Here.
Uh, Trudy Syfax, absent. Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Eric Galipo.
Here.
Rick Lambert.
You're muted, Rick.
I'm here.
Thank you, and Barbara Krzak.
Here.
All the attendees are present.
Okay, um, does the, the planning board, um, uh, actually, why don't we continue on with the planner? Since we were on a roll, and let's, uh, do that and then go to the questions from the, uh, planning board members.
Um, Madam Chairwoman, there are so many overlaps between the planner's, um, report and the engineer's report we just finished. I wonder if maybe, uh, the planner could just call out the issue that she feels we haven't addressed, because they're really very similar reports.
This is Donna, I'm happy to help out, uh, expedite things, um, if you could just, um, uh, I appreciate the addition of the street tree, that's great.
Uh, just, just one second, can we get rid of the, um, if you stop screen sharing, if you don't mind? Thank you.
Alright.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, so the thing about the street tree, thank you, and I appreciate Mr. Henry's concern about the site distance, and I, I think that it will be easily overcome. Um. Let's see, uh, I would I'm going to hang on to that a minute, um, I think, um, I don't think it's unreasonable, and, you know, I'll, of course defer to the board's, uh, perspective on this, but uh, you know, a bench and a, and a bike rack along with the front edge of this building, I don't think is an unreasonable ask for street furnishings. And, uh, incorporate, incorporating them into the proposed landscaping between the sidewalk and the building, I think is, is, uh, again, not too much to ask in order to help make this, uh, retail, potential retail space more viable, and again, you're doing the engagement along the street line by bringing the building up. This is, this is that other aspect of that.
I might add, if I may, this is Eric Galipo, um, I would say that, you know, the, the fact that there's a parking waiver being asked for means that we have to do as much as we can to make this building and the location appear as pedestrian and bike friendly as possible. So people see those modes as a viable alternative to driving. And so I do think there's a relationship between the provision of such amenities at the street edge relative to the amount of parking being provided, provided.
Thank you. Um, also, I just want to clarify for the thing about the rep use, uh, storage. And, and Mr. Harmon may be better suited to answering this question, since he's more in touch with the operations with his other, other buildings. So, um, the understanding is that the residents are going to have direct access to those, um, that enclosure area on the back of the building, uh, those, uh, panels, gates. Um, will, will they be locked, will they not be locked? Uh, they just have, anybody can access them and then put their trash and recycling within whichever container has room? Is that basically how it's going to work?
Uh, yes, Donna, the, uh, way we have it on nine zero nine, uh, one is marked trash, it's clearly marked, and the other one's clearly marked recyclables, and they're not behind a fence yet, that's the last phase of that property, but they will be behind a hinged gate. Not a lock gate, but just a, a gate with a latch, so they stay, they stay closed and easily opened by, uh, the tenants.
Okay, and then, um, it's private hauling, so you control the frequency of pickup?
Correct.
Excellent, um, and then, um, let me just jump to the report real quick. Oh, okay, uh, Mr. Anderson, the fencing, um, so there's a cedar board fence? Do you have a, is it pocket or board on board? Can you give us any more description on the type of fencing?
Well, uh, not really at this, at this point. I, I, I agree with your statement in your letter, saying that it should be compatible with the building. And, uh, I think, uh, what we will do is I'll get together with Mary and Jay and see what we feel complements uh, the, uh, the building, uh, architecture the most, and then we'll put in a fence of that type, I'll put that detail on my plan.
Okay, and then, again, if the board has any, uh, preferences, I, we're happy that it's uh, cedar or at least wood fencing rather than vinyl, uh, I think that will complement, uh, better.
Yes.
Uh, let's see, so we talked about parking earlier, the driveway was, so, um, again, the idea of the street furnishing and the, maybe a bike rack and getting this, uh, pedestrian relationship with the building. So how, uh, and Ms. Hearn had testified earlier that the hope is that there's actually only two um, commercial spaces at most on the ground floor, so that they're actually accessed uh, either readily from Asbury Avenue or readily, I guess, from the parking area without having to do some sort of cross.
Correct.
But can you speak more to, again, if, if the residents, so the only option for residents are to use that stair on the back of the building, so can you talk a little bit more about the pedestrian circulation, how you're envisioning, so people would just walk up the driveway to the back of the building from Asbury Avenue in order to get to that residential access?
It, yes, if they're walking, they would walk down the driveway to, uh, to the back and then in the rear door to, to their, to their apartment unit. But, yeah, I mean, there's three apartments, it's, it's not going to be a frequent occurrence, uh, and as I mentioned, I don't think that there's a too much of a conflict that you're going to have between pedestrian and autos in that driveway.
Yeah, and we're hopeful that, again, it's, uh, you know, we're encouraging the more, uh, pedestrian environment, and we're not going to have a lot of turnover activity in that driveway. Uh, and maybe, Jason, I don't know if you need to weigh in on this, um, should there be any sort of, um, you know, sight mirrors or something, so that, um, you know, when you come around that corner, you get a kind of an advanced hint that there might be somebody walking in the driveway or vice versa, that you're about to encounter a car turning into the driveway? If you're walking down the middle of the driveway?
I mean, you, you could, there's a little bit of a distance, uh, between the end of the driveway. Uh, I'm sorry, between the end of the building and where the sidewalk crosses. Um, a stop sign may be appropriate, um, a mirror could be appropriate. We could have one of those, um, alarm systems like we've seen uh, in some of those buildings on the east side, if, if the board desired something like that. Uh, they would have flashing lights, could have an audible alarm, something like that.
Yeah, I think, I think the back corner of the building is also, I'm kind of concerned about that, um, more than at the front. I know that there's, you know, we kind of have a cushion in this case, uh, between the street line and where cars are coming out of the driveway, so, you know, we don't have to worry about, you know, there's, there's kind of that you know, little bit of cushion and elbow room before you get to the sidewalk, if you're coming down the driveway and exiting. But when you go to the back of the building and you're going to turn that corner to go into a parking space, that's a little dicey, I think.
You're concerned about the car's visibility as it pulls up the driveway?
So, say I'm a tenant and I'm putting my garbage in the uh, in the recycling, uh, container thing in the back of the building. Um, and so I've got my doors open. They've got those doors open and somebody comes down the driveway to park in the back. You know? I don't know, I just, uh, it seems like there's the potential for I'm standing in the back of the building and all of a sudden a car comes around the corner.
Right, because it's also, it also is the, the reverse, if somebody's walking down towards the back of the building on the driveway, they can't see that a car is going to come at them.
Right.
Now, as they're, as the car is leaving the building, the, the pedestrian is walking towards the building. I don't think that they, there's any visibility there. Uh, is there, you know, something like a mirror or something like that that can be put up?
And, and again, if we, if there's striping proposed to ensure that people stay on the right side or the left side, you know, for in and out?
Well, you certainly can put pavement striping there, and that way, if two cars have to pass when pedestrians aren't there, then they can just drive over the paint stripe a little bit.
Right, I think that we're more, more concerned about the pedestrians and making sure that everyone is safe.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I, I hear where you're, where the conversation is going. I, I would say up against the building on nine seventeen, we would have a three to four foot wide striped area. Uh, that, that we would just stripe out there and then pedestrians could walk that to the, to the front to get to the sidewalk. It also would be a little bit of a traffic calming measure by making it be perceived as a narrower space. Uh, and, and get people slowed down, although I don't know that they'd be going very quickly at that point, uh, as they just turned in, but it doesn't hurt.
Sorry, Donna?
Uh, if, if the board is, finds it, you know, acceptable, I don't, I don't know if I'm just being overly, but I think, uh, again, because it's, you know, there's kind of no forgiveness here, it's building or building or driveway and.
Cause, uh, just one, one other thing, while we're on this driveway, uh, isn't this driveway or these parking spaces shared between the two buildings, or is the driveway only shared? Are the parking spaces shared?
Just the driveway shared.
Okay, but it is possible that people from the other building park there.
No.
It's not possible?
Will not be permitted, no.
Okay.
So will that be signed? Again, same thing with the residents parking spaces. Is there gonna be a allocation designated spaces? Anything like that?
Yes, designated spaces on the they'll be signed on that western portion of the property where the ahead of the parking spots.
Are there other mixed use buildings in the in the vicinity?
Yes, there are directly across the street. Nine nine twenty-two is mixed use. That's resident or office below and residential above. Nine zero nine that we spoke about earlier, the rear building is mixed use.
But that provides more parking.
Pardon me?
I'm just, it was, never mind.
Okay, Ms. Miller, I think you're up.
So I think that satisfies my questions from the testimony and our major concerns from our letter, just reinforcing the things about the what was agreed to for the meters and and the lighting that was discussed in from Jason's letter.
Are we okay with the affordable housing portion of this?
Uh, there's no units provided. They're just gonna be subject to the 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 mandatory development fee.
Would it be an acceptable solution to your issue with the bicycle rack, bench, et cetera? We could put two bicycle racks or bicycle rack for two towards the rear of the property instead of out on the street?
Go ahead, Tom, I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry. I mean, you can certainly provide bike racks onsite in the rear, but that doesn't satisfy the zoning requirement for the street furnishings. They they need to be in the public sphere.
That I understand. My question is, would that satisfy, would that be a fair compromise on the issue?
But I don't think so, because again
We'd still need a variance.
The public sphere.
Right.
I think the problem with that, too, is you don't know that it's there if you're just in the public.
Right.
If it's to the back of the site.
Exactly.
All right. If you could give me three minutes, I just need to the client is in the building here and I just need to ask him about that. So if you give me three minutes and I'll be right back.
Okay. I mean, obviously, the board members have opinions about what they think would be suitable along this stretch that might influence whether a bench or a bike rack. I don't know. How do you guys feel about what you think should go out here? It is a new, it is a new criteria for this district, so we're kind of feeling our way.
Well, my my let me just throw out my personal opinion and then we can certainly discuss. Is that that, you know, we have an opportunity here and there are new criterias that we're trying to enforce. So I don't think it's an unreasonable request by any means for us to do this.
And and while I understand that a bench may not be what the applicant desires, I do think at the very least the furniture, there there is a rational relationship between bike parking infrastructure and low parking counts. If you want people not to drive here, you have to give them a place to park a bike. Or you don't have to. It's the biggest benefit is the place to park a bike.
I'm also looking at the Google Street View. So we have a bus stop at the corner of Asbury Avenue in Langford on this side of the street. There used to be a scooter dock. I guess to the south side of lot, Jesus, a lot one. To the lot eleven. I don't know if we're still doing scooters in town. Did we? Are they completely stopped now or?
This year.
Yeah. And then down at the other end of the block. The rest of Mr. Harmon's properties, you know, we have nice landscaped curb line with trees and grass and the plantings in front of his buildings, but there's there are no benches, there are no bike racks, there are no other you know, pedestrian.
Jim Henry, if the applicant is going to treat the the front of the the building in a similar manner as the building to the east of it. He certainly could incorporate a bike rack into that, into those plantings without too much difficulty. I don't know what the plan is for that. There was mention of it, but I don't see any detail on it. Certainly, a bike rack could be incorporated in into that landscape.
It could go on either the side, on the street side or on the property side.
Right.
I discussed it with the applicant and obviously the board feels strongly about it, so if that's what it takes to get an approval, we'll do it. So we'll put a bicycle rack in in the front of the property.
So do we have everything?
I just want to clarify. So is it a bike rack and a bench or one or the other?
They you don't have to ask the applicant what they want to do. It's actually
I'm asking what they're proposing, but
Oh, okay, okay.
I do want to clarify. You know, what the board is gonna say is, yes, that satisfies you know, the C criteria of the variances for this requirement, whether there's a mitigation of it or or balancing or satisfaction, so that you're not actually
Yeah, so I've spoken to the applicant and he will agree to put a bike rack in the area of the property identified by you is satisfying that requirement. That that will eliminate one variance.
Correct. How many bikes? Do we generally ask for a certain number of bikes to be accommodated or do we just say a bike rack?
Usually Michael Manzella helps us out with that.
Okay, yeah, I would I would really think that we would value his counsel on the appropriate number of bicycle parking spaces to be provided.
Right, so it would be really the approval of the transportation director. For the style, of course, and the number that appropriate for this location.
My concern, Donna, and and the board was basically the aesthetics of, because I spent a lot of time on getting the right look and feel of the properties with landscaping and so forth, so just want to be careful that the bike rack will, I know there's all kinds of designs out now that would be that would complement, not take away from the aesthetics of the of the the building, so and still be functional and inviting for potential customers who would hopefully visit this new retail or office location.
Is there anything else? Donna, on your report, are we okay?
Again, just if the board has any preference about the style of the fence, I think that'll satisfy all of the issues.
If I can just jump in, I I know it will not be a stockade fence, but it would be something, it would be probably a board on board. Mike, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry. It would be a board on board. It would it would be consistent with the architecture of the of the proposed building. Likely six foot in height.
Can we just clarify for the record how many parking spaces are being requested? Oh, how how many parking space waivers are being requested? Is it five or is it three?
I think it is two steps here, if I understand it correctly, and I'll be guided by your attorney, but I think we have to ask for you to approve sharing. And if you approve that, then we can tell you how many spaces we're asking for.
Think I can help Eric out here. Assuming the board entertains the sharing.
I I think that was my question. I understand. I appreciate that.
Okay.
All right, does the board have any other questions? Of the engineer or the plant or the planner slash planner?
Jen Sauter.
All right, Jen.
I just had a couple. The one pedestrian friendly aspect was just discussed and somewhat resolved, so that that makes me happy. I think that that was that's really important for that part of Asbury Avenue to try to engage pedestrians more. Very quick thing about the landscape plan, you had mentioned that you were fine with the switch from fountain grass to switchgrass or something that was not invasive. And then I noticed this is a small thing, but that you have a box, you have boxwood there. And I'm wondering if you might be open to switching to an alternative like ink barrier or something very similar that was, you don't have to deal with flight from the boxwood and other things that boxwood just causes some issues sometimes with the if you have a lot of it in one area.
I have no issue with making that change.
And the last, my other item was just that you had spoken about the item, I think it I believe it was the engineering report, item twenty-one, when you went through the noise, air, water quality item. And I was just wondering from planning, both planning and and engineering perspectives, if there were any discussions of incorporating green building strategies on the site. I know there was some discussion of the stormwater management and that, but I wasn't, I didn't really hear it. Anything specific about addressing green building on the site?
We have not had discussions about green buildings, green building measures on this property. There's not a significant amount of things that we can do. I don't believe we're proposing green roof or anything like that. And and I'm not, other than energy efficiency, which I'm sure we're trying to meet as many the high energy efficient mechanical devices and water saving devices and things like that. But I but we haven't really addressed trying to meet some kind of lead certification or green building standard.
Okay, I know that we're just trying to encourage developers to do that wherever they can, not necessarily either the certifications, but just wherever you can bring those elements in in terms of material. Some of the things that you're talking about are addressing that. That's, you know. But just to kind of articulate that as we go through would be helpful for us to see more more of a focus on that.
There is some natural daylighting with the skylights in the stairwells of the third floor two bedroom apartments.
And I apologize because I meant to ask the same of the architect, but I had it on my engineering report for some reason.
Was there also a mention that of based on what is there today versus what the new building is? If there's more or less impervious surfaces?
Reduction in impervious.
There is.
Reduction in impervious?
There is a reduction, yes.
Yes, from what I recall, you mentioned was something less than ten percent?
We are permitted ninety percent onsite. We, the existing is ninety seven point four and we're going to eighty seven point eight. So it's about ten percent reduction from what's existing.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any any other questions from the planning board members? Any other questions from our professionals?
Is there I run through my planning proofs on this?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't really presented the proofs for C one and C two, and if I could just push those through with the with Paul, that'd be appreciated, just to get him on the record.
I I actually think I I think this is justified with the C two criterion. You you basically have a new building being designed. It's making a meaningful contribution to the public viewshed and spatial character of Asbury Avenue. It is indicated in the original planner's report or first application. The old design was called the missing tooth in in the in the smile or of the entry to Asbury Asbury Park. We are replacing that missing tooth with a building that's compatible with the neighborhood in materials, size, fenestration, everything. If you go over your planner's letter, you'll see, I think you'll see that we actually meet the goals, the planning goals of Asbury Park, the land use objectives of Asbury Park. And we made a very good effort to meet the urban design objectives with the building in this location and with these with these features. When we're removing the existing building, we're eliminating several nonconformities, including the impervious coverage overage and and setbacks to the rear and side yard. And then also by changing the use from what was there previously in itself is is quite a benefit to get rid of the the car repair business. Certainly, if you're looking at the the state, state planning goals, it certainly meets state planning goal I, which is a desirable visual environment. So it 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 forwards the the state plan in that regard. So with all of that, if we look at the negative criteria side, I we have several minor deviations here with regard to a few parking spaces, which we've discussed, it's either three or five spaces. And 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 we have some other minor deviations for materials and things and several that we've already you know, decided to not request. So I don't think if you look at the any of the downside that we've been discussing this evening, there's any way that you can say that these items are substantial in nature. So the positive criteria substantially outweighs the negative criteria here, and you can grant these variances without substantial detriment to the zone plan or the ordinance.
Madam Chairman, that completes our presentation.
Thank you. Anything from the planning board members? Anything from the our professionals? Anything for any, I guess we'll open it up for public questions. I see we have a member of the public. I don't see a hand up. Okay, we're gonna close public questions then. And can I get a motion to open for public comments?
So move, Jim Henry.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, no opposed. Open for public comment.
All right, if I'm looking and I see there's one attendee from the public and I don't see a hand up, so a motion to close public comment.
So move, Jim Henry.
Second, Rick Lambert.
Okay.
Favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, public comment section closed.
All right, so here we are. All right, for the for planning board members. Do we want to have a discussion about some of the items that we would need our attorney to put into resolution? Or you want you want each of you to come up with which ones you were interested in or?
How about, if I may?
You may.
Down a bunch, how about if I throw things out there and you can tell me?
Okay.
Or or give me some further explanations.
Okay.
One condition would be submission, if not already done so, of a complete set of driveway easement documentation, including that backup area for loading trucks for for commercial vehicles in and out that we spoke to Mr. Anderson about. The shared parking, make a decision on that. The ordinance allows for it, I believe, and Donna can correct me if I'm wrong. So with that in mind, based on the testimony of Mr. Harmon and Mr. Anderson, would the board going to permit the shared? uh, would the board uh, going to permit the shared parking, which I believe was two of the required spaces would be uh, able to be reduced. So therefore, the variance would be for either uh, 10 or 11, Donna, which, I mean, I'm, doesn't matter, 10 or 11, whichever the number is I'll put in. So I just need to know which one it is.
Uh, well, actually, I was going to ask Eric if he had an opinion about that. I think they need a ver, uh, an exception for three spaces. I think that's how I got it, with the shared arrangement.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, we as a board should take a position about whether or not we think this is a valid application of shared parking. You know, one of the things that I think the applicant has repeatedly stated is that they don't know the tenants of the ground floor space, nor, so how do we assess the intensity of that use to understand whether or not shared parking could truly be applied, because I believe the shared parking regulation refers to certain uses like office or laboratory that are predominantly used during the day. But what happens when we have a tenant who comes in and is also has evening hours or has some activity at night and it becomes a conflict between the residents upstairs and the commercial facility downstairs, that becomes an impact on the exterior environment because it will force parking offsite in a very constrained location. Now, I think, I, I do agree that the redevelopment of this property is on the whole a benefit to, you know, to the city and it does meet certain requirements of the master plan. But I do think that we should have a discussion about what we think the anticipated intensity of the retail commercial use is, and whether that's how we decide whether it's shared or not.
Well, well, we'd also had, had stated, Eric, that um, that there was going to be signage, but I guess in that confusion as to what would the signage be?
Signage has to comply, the condition would be that the signage would comply with the ordinance.
But if it's going to be retail, if we're going, we're agreeing to share, then who always gets the spaces, the resident?
I'm sorry, I thought you meant signage on the front of the building.
No, no, I'm sorry, it's, it has to do with the, the parking.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Parking.
It's, it seems like a little bit of a thorny issue because we don't, you know, the applicant has repeatedly stated that they don't know the downstairs tenant yet. So how can we be expected to make a decision about whether or not it's an adequate application of sharing? If we don't know some range of the use?
I'd like to address the question to uh, Mr. Serpico or Ms. Miller. Um, if we designated the parking signs to have a timeframe of which, um, who's allowed those spots? Um, would that be a solution to your concerns? Say uh, 8:05 is retail and, and 5:30 to 6:00 AM is residential or?
Does that satisfy the board members, including Mr. Galipo?
If I may also, early on in my testimony, I uh, I mentioned that the property, the mix, the live workspace is a much larger uh, project and in the last nearly two and a half years, we have not been strained on parking there at all.
Right, but that's live work, it's not retail.
Right, that.
I, I, I think everybody, there's a hope and an, you know, expectation that this is Asbury Avenue, it's right on the street front. We're hoping you're going to get a tenant that's going to rely on neighborhood foot traffic, just like, you know?
Mm-hmm.
So, so, um, it, you know, it's, it's a technicality in a sense, but we also need to have that, the board needs to have that assurance that we're not going to end up having double parking on, on Asbury Avenue with people trying to just run in and out and they can't reliably, you know, nail a parking space in the back and have to, you know, back out, turn around, whatever. So, um, I, I, I think that's really what the, the concern is that they, there's this comfort level that we're never going to swamp uh, the, the parking that's provided onto, onto Asbury Avenue. Um, and, and I'm, I'm not sure, you know, it's really it's, that's the unknown without knowing who's going to go in there. Hopefully as a, as a, as a true retail space, you know, most floor area in retail is not jammed with bodies, it's jammed with merchandise.
My, this is, this is Rick. Um, there's a pretty significant amount of on-street parking available on Langford and around over to First Avenue in that area. I said, I just live a couple of blocks from there. I walk the dogs there all the time and there's, there's a pretty good amount of available street side park and curb side parking. I don't know if that's something to consider in that area, but I mean.
There is also a considerable amount of capacity for new development in that same area.
Yeah, but, but that's, I, I mean, we're, we're talking about a, an application right now and what they are proposing and what's available is right now, you, I mean, we can't say, oh, well, some, sometime later, there's going to be a, a development's going to come in, so we can't, we can't grant it. I mean, I, I don't think you can do that. They can't take the application that's before us and consider what's available and what's there now, and some applicant down the road will have to deal with their issues when they come in.
I have, I, there's an additional step that can be taken. Uh, the lease agreements, especially the commercial lease agreements would have to, should have a clause in it that limits the time of parking so that the, these, uh, you can enforce these issues, not just put them outside. Beyond that, you're not going to be able to control it much more other than if you try to control the type of tenants that go in there and that's not the province of the planning board. So Jay?
One other issue is without, we can't create any more parking on that site. I think everybody would agree to that.
Right.
So if we don't get the variance, we can't build the project.
Right, well, I'm suggesting there's a way to get the variance. The shared, first, A, qualify for shared parking and then secondarily, the board has to decide if you've met the qua, the criteria for the variance.
Well, and again, clarification, it's a design exception.
Right, okay, design exception. So Jay has offered one very good suggestion, which is signage. But signage without a lease provision uh, is worthless. So in my
Jack, we'll, we'll stipulate, we'll put it in the leases and we'll send them to you for review.
And, and what about Title 39? Would you agree to Title 39?
What's Title 39?
I don't think we have a, Jay, do you know what Title 39 agreement is?
No.
Title 39 agreement is that we would authorize the police in Asbury Park to enforce Title 39, which is the traffic regulations. I, I don't think we'd have a problem with that. We'd have to sign a Title 39 agreement, that's, it's just submitted to Jack.
It, it'd be great. Now, let, let me just uh, back up just a moment. I've been bought my first building in 2005, so I've been on Asbury Avenue since, for over 15 years now with a retail establishment at 922, uh, which we were granted some parking relief there. And then I've been in the current building at 913 since 2010, and we have a decent amount, depending on the day and so forth, uh, traffic. And then there's also business across the street, uh, uptighties in building or tools and so forth. There's no parking, it's, everything's on the street. And it doesn't seem like the street really gets jammed. Is uh, as Rick had mentioned, there's, there's parking down on Langford, there's parking on Memorial, there's uh, parking on First Avenue, it's wide open right now. Uh, probably the biggest uh, graphic uh, or uh, taxiing on vehicles right now is the luncheonette on the corner of Langford and and uh, Asbury Avenue, they have no parking and their flow, their heavy use of parking is typically in the mornings and heavier on the weekends than this during the weekdays, but I don't see anybody over there, and I'm very involved in my business, uh, driving around the block to find a parking spot like they are on Cookman or Bangs or the other side of the, the track. So uh, we, I haven't seen it and I've seen the traffic bill and so forth, but I haven't seen parking demands get really strained over there at this point. And um, and I haven't seen very much of double parking at all. There might be an occasional tractor trailer out front for a delivery, whether it's my business or or across the street, but they're in and out in five to 10 minutes and Asbury Avenue is wide enough to accommodate. There's never been a a traffic jam. The last time there was traffic problem there was when the county was repaving Asbury Avenue.
This is Rick again. The only double parking issues I've ever seen is further to the west by those auto repair places where they are loading cars onto flat beds and stuff like that. So I, I think in that, I mean, I walk there all the time with the dogs, especially since the pandemic, I worked from home for months. So I'm over there all the time and I, I just don't see a, a, a traffic parking issue there at all.
This is, you know, I don't know that we're trying to solve the traffic problem, we're trying to decide whether or not this is a good application of shared parking.
Right, and I, my point is that there is a lot of on-street parking available, so you know, the shared parking, the shared parking, I don't think would be a problem.
But no, the, the shared parking is an arrangement on the, that happens on the site that is irrespective of the presence or lack of parking or not. I agree with you, there probably is plenty of capacity to receive it, but we should decide as a board whether we're giving them a ver, uh, an, an exception for three spaces or for five spaces.
Right, but, but it's also that I think that with the, what has been mentioned about this lease provision, let me, if we enforce this lease provision, it also helps us on the 18-foot driveway, which we're stating is a low volume, but if, if it's a higher volume, that's a bigger problem. So if we're talking about putting in, enforcing a lease provision, then that might kill those two birds.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's my thought about it.
All right. Any further discussion? Right, so when we uh, when we take a vote, then, then we would, you will vote on that issue.
Uh, now the, so, just so we understand, the current, the current agreement is that there will be
signage?
A shared parking arrangement that is indicated through some sort of signage and enforced through a lease provision.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
You have anything else on your list there, Jack?
I should do. Uh, obviously it's subject to county agencies approvals, uh, outside agencies. On the sidewalk restoration, what was the outcome of that? Was that going to be something to be done?
We're going to have a street lawn, a, a, a simple sidewalk, way sidewalk through and a street lawn between the curb and the uh, sidewalk, similar to what we have east of the property.
Right, and the uh, street tree planting, that was something the plan had to be submitted to the county for their review and approval. I think that was Mr. Henry's comments and Donna's comments perhaps. Uh, shared parking, we already discussed. Jason's requirements, those items that Jason, that I didn't write every single one of them down, but they're, it's always subject to compliance with the outstanding conditions in Jason's report. Jason will get my resolution and he'll give me the numbers of the paragraphs that were supposed to be inserting in there. Sewer connection fees uh, through the city engineer. Um, are there any encroachments to any city right of way that need approval from the mayor or council with this project?
I don't believe so, Jack.
Okay, none. Okay. Uh, let's see. Uh,
Bike rack?
Well, I'm going to get there. It's, I'm not, I'm not done. Uh, bench and bike rack installation in the front, uh, planned to be submitted. I'm sorry?
Right, it, it has to be approved by the transportation director?
Approved.
So they know what kind and how many?
By, yeah, by transportation, okay, which is that. Refuge storage, private handling. Were there any additional requirements for the refuge storage area that we agreed to or discussed? I don't think so, okay. Fencing, uh, applicant's going to submit ultimately a plan that shows a wooden fence, uh, uh, six feet in height. Um, it's up to the applicant, I assume, if, whether it's board on board or some other construction, but it is going to be of wood, wood construction. Applicant is going Yes.
Sorry, it's Jason. That condition is basically saying that the fence is going to be wooden and it's going to be six feet high?
Yes, I have that.
And so I'm just thinking, if this is a condition and it, it comes under resolution appliance review, what we're looking for is a six-foot-high wooden fence, there's no other standards.
Right. Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Sorry, Donna?
Solid fence.
Solid, okay. Uh, applicant is going to install certain safety measures, which is a pedestrian, a striped area wh- within the driveway, within the uh, driveway in, all the way to the back, three to four feet in area. And that's something I'll develop with Jason, in terms of art and engineering detail. Jason, is that correct?
Yeah, um, I, I mean, that was the testimony, that there'd be a striped area that would act somewhat like a sidewalk that would connect the sidewalk on the street to the parking area in the back.
Okay.
I think uh, three to four feet sounds great, that provides some nice space, but we also have to consider that the driveway is 18 feet wide, where it's supposed to be 24 for two-way travel. Uh, if a driver is going to make every effort to stay off of that striped area, how tight do we want to make it?
I don't know. That was what Paul had said in his testimony, three to four feet.
Yeah, I, I agree with, I agree with everything, except I think four feet in this case might be a bit much.
I think Briefly.
Great.
Three feet.
Okay, um, uh, the payment of the financial development fees set forth in Donna's report in lieu of uh, compliance with the fair share housing situation. Uh, again, I had a second condition, which is part of the, the bike rack uh, to be uh, reviewed and approved by Michael Manzella as transportation director. Uh, and I had something about a landscape plan amendment. And I have a question mark. Did I already cover it and go into the board, county?
We stipulated that we would remove an environmentally unfriendly plant and replace it with something else, and also that we would, um, I think, replace a boxwood, if I recall Jennifer's apartment.
Yes, it's just an alternative to boxwood, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, we'd, we'd also spoken about uh, signed parking hours.
Yes, yeah, I'm
Put that in there?
Yes, that was in the parking area and the shared parking space. If, if we go with the shared, if the board approves the shared parking arrangement, it would be as Erica characterized it and outlined it, that it was the two conditions. Sinage uh, indicating hours for residential versus um, uh, commercial, uh, and the inclusion of provisions within the lease agreements uh, on the uh, parking requirements and/or limitations at the project. And that is what I have.
Uh, I just want to make one comment. Uh, we don't necessarily need to take it anywhere, but we're, we're having an issue with another project in the city where uh, there was improvements proposed in the county right of way and the county is pushing back on those and we're having a tug of war. So I think um, everything that's been discussed here, if I had to guess, I think the county's going to be okay with it, especially considering the project to the east is not that old and got county approval. So I think that we're going to be pretty consistent throughout, but I only mention this in the instance, you know, unlikely event that county comes back and they'd like to see something different.
That's why I have that standard condition in all of them that says if it requires, if any application requires outside agency approval and they modify or change the approvals of this board, the applicant must come back for the review and approval of the board of those conditions, so that locked into something we don't accept.
Thank you, Jack.
Okay, um, there was one other thing. Meter locations. The, where, do you want the meters on the side, on that west side or at the rear?
I think the rear or the, the rear west side.
I'm asking the board.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I was, I was, I was thinking for what was presented was that uh, suggested to put on the west side?
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that, as long as you tell me that's, that's what the board wants, okay. Sorry, Jay, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Sorry.
Uh, let me make sure I have something else here. Shared driveway amusement meter parking, you're going to also Shared driveway amusement, meter parking, you're gonna also submit a lighting plan? Um.
Sure, it's an update of a plan.
Right, okay, updated lighting plan showing the gooseneck lights as well and photometrics, which is typically, I get that language from Donna on all of them, and I always make it wrong so I know she's reading my resolutions so that she can change it. I always give her the same thing, and she always gives me the same, same answer back. Uh, HVAC, do you want that fourth side enclosed? Yes?
Yes, because we don't, we don't know what's going to be on Lot 2.
No problem, no problem, I just wanna make sure I got it. Uh.
I, may I interject? I know it will be on Lot 2. Lot 2 will be a parking lot.
That's all right, it's, it's, you can't, you can't, you can, that's fine, but you can't interject beyond that, it's up to the board whether they, whether or not.
Sorry.
Because I mean, right now, right now, right, right now, you might feel that that's what it's going to be.
Worth a shot.
Tomorrow, could be something else.
Worth a shot, okay, um, I think that's it.
I have a couple of items, I don't know if they're, uh, already in your.
Okay.
In there, um, we're gonna add the canopies to the floor plans. The guy, I, I think that it was on page two or four, we didn't have the canopy there. So, so there's, just in general, there were a number of items that, where the plans did not reflect, uh, they had to be updated. So I can bring up some of those, but I, I'm, I'm hoping that other people have what they really are, like the canopies, like, um, we wanted to have, you know, uh, that the meters were gonna be on all sides, the lighting.
I got that.
Add the lighting, we're gonna add the striping.
Yeah, that, that's gonna be, okay.
Uh, we, you'd mentioned something about a meeting across easement?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've already prepared and submitted an easement.
All right, we just have to have that in there. Um, there was also, yeah, they, they, yeah, the meters have to be added to an exhibit. We also had that there was a request for the material to be consistent on all sides, and I believe that the design that we have right now, uh, reflects that it is not. And in my personal opinion, I think it looks great, the way that it is, as opposed to having the, having the material consistent on all sides. If that's.
That's a waivered design exception or variance request.
Yeah. It is, I, I mean, I personally and the board, that if they prefer what's been presented versus having it the same on all sides.
Um, I think it's an important point to make that requiring the material on all sides actually reduces the quality of the street-facing facade because you can concentrate your attention and your expense on a highly detailed, high-quality, street-facing facade. And I do agree that the applicant has given us enough assurance that the materials are complimentary, which seems the more important aspect. In a lot of commercial architecture, it's very common that the front-facing facade will have a different, more detailed material than the side-facing facades. The building next to this, your current building, is exactly that condition. You have brick facing the street and a few feet on the side, and then past that, it's just cementitious material, stucco, whatever.
Then we'll package that relief within the vote for all the other variances after step one, which is the shared parking arrangement, and then go into the package, okay?
And, and you know, this is a, you know, point, we, we should kinda put a pin in this for later meetings about discussing how we phrase the same material on all sides.
Uh, whatever, okay.
And this is, this is Rick, I just wanna echo, um, Barbara's and Eric's comments. And I like, uh, when you were doing the presentation, uh, the reasoning behind the step back and the change of materials on the upper floor so that it looked like it was a later addition. Uh, I thought that was, uh, an interesting design solution, and the ground floor is really very well done. It, um, there's a building on the west, in the next block over on the west side, it's a glass and window place. The architecture is very similar to that, so I think it really captures, uh, kind of what the, probably what Asbury Avenue looked like when it was more uniform retail uses and not all these automobile uses that are currently there. So I, I like the idea of the different, uh, materials on the, on the, the facades of the building. I think you did, you did a good job with it.
Thank you. Barb, did you have any other, uh?
Um, no, I, that's, those are all of the ones that I have on my list, I don't know if anybody else had any?
Okay, what's the board's pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion to, um, approve the site plan, uh, with all of the items noted that we just mentioned.
Okay, and the initial first step, the acceptance of the shared parking or giving them qualifying for shared parking based with, on the conditions we discussed?
Based on the conditions we discussed, yes.
And then second.
The lease provision and what?
Balance of the variances and design exceptions and/or waivers, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Got the characterization. Anyone wanna second that?
I'll second it, this is Rick.
Okay, seconded by Rick Lambert. Okay, let's do a roll call here. I'll switch hats for the second, for the moment, okay. Uh, by those in attendance, Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Eric Galipo?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Barbara Kryzak?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Madam Chairwoman and members of the board and professional staff, thank you very much for hearing our application, and, uh, we appreciate it. Also appreciate that you went to such a late hour.
Well, we, uh, we appreciate that you're putting up a building that will complement, um, and improve, uh, Asbury Avenue.
Thank you, board.
Okay, um, can I get a, um, motion to?
Motion to adjourn, this is Rick, motion to adjourn.
Second? Barbara Kryzak, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing none, eyes have it.
All right, thank you very much, good night, everybody.
Bye.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.